This is in Spanish, please click the globe that says interpretation on the menu bar at the bottom of your screen. And you will need to select to mute the original content in order to hear the Spanish translation. Before we get to our presenters tonight, I do want to kick it off to our mayor, Justin Manalo, for some welcoming remarks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy lives to join us for a learning session around your transportation challenges and needs. Your voice truly matters. We want to ensure that transportation options in Daly City serve everyone that lives, works, or visits Daly City. We are also an age-friendly city, a special designation by the World Health Organization because of our commitment to the fastest-growing age demographic in our city, older adults. We want to hear about the transportation needs for older adults tonight as well. You know, when I was growing up in Daly City, my family, you know, didn't, they had a car, but then I also had to take the bus going to Jefferson High School for Ben Franklin and then going to visit my friends at Fernando Rivera. So it was really important. Sometimes I also would take the bus with my grandmother in order to go to her medical appointments or if she needed to go to the grocery store. So I know how important it is as far as having, you know, transit and options for our community. And we want to ensure that this continues in our city. I'm so happy to see so many partners here today to really ensure that we have these transit options and opportunities for our community. It's really the reason why I wanted to hold this transportation town hall tonight. We know that, you know, some folks, this is the only mode of transportation. For some, it's sometimes they utilize the system, but we know how dense Daly City is and how important it is to continue to have these opportunities of transit. So tonight you will hear from the CCAG for a short presentation about their development of the community-based transportation plan. And afterwards, you'll be able to also share your transportation stories. Then you'll hear about the reimagined SAM Trans campaign, which will help fine-tune bus routes in Daly City. Again, you'll have the opportunity to share your experiences and insights on the alternate routes presented by the SAM Trans team. But before we start our presentations, I want to acknowledge some of my colleagues that are here, Vice Mayor Daws Magbuwal, also council member Pamela Di Giovanni, for being here tonight. And she also sits on CCAG as a board of director. And next, I want to introduce our very special guest who took the time out of his busy schedule and who never forgets Daly City, our county supervisor for opening remarks and really his continued support and effort to ensuring that we have our transit needs here from the onset on when he was on council to his role as board president at the county. So we are so grateful to have him here. Supervisor David Canepa, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Manalo, for this invitation. And I truly appreciate how collaborative you are. I want to thank the council and the staff. I want to talk a little bit about Plan Bay Area 2050 and some of the initiatives through my role as the Metropolitan Transportation Commissioner. As you know, it's myself and serving the cities is Gina Pappan. So one of MTC's core responsibilities is the development of the Bay Area's long-range regional transportation plan and sustainable communities strategy. State and federal law requires this plan to be updated every four years. And what do you know, it's just about that time again. Nearly four have now passed since MTC and ABAG adopted the current regional plan, which is known as Plan Bay Area 2040 back in 2017. So next week, MTC and ABAG will release a draft of the next plan called Plan Bay Area 2050, which charts a course for transportation investment as well as housing and land use out to 2050. MTC is scheduled to adopt the final version of Plan Bay Area 2050 this fall. On the transportation front, the biggest piece of the draft plan is to restore, operate, and maintain the transportation network we already have. This reflects a longstanding MTC commitment to fix it first. Some of the other transportation priorities include expanding and modernizing the regional rail network by extending a newly electrified Caltrain and high-speed rail to the Salesforce Transit Center in downtown San Francisco, building a second rail crossing between San Francisco and Oakland, and completing BART through downtown San Jose to Santa Clara, providing more money for community land improvements in lower-income and historically marginalized neighborhoods, promoting a more seamless transit experience by eliminating barriers to multi-agency trips, requiring schedule coordination among agencies, and reforming fare policies, improving freeway interchanges and relieving critical bottlenecks, completing an integrated network of express lanes, including the lanes now under construction on 101 between SFO and Palo Alto, improving safety for all pedestrians and bikers as well as drivers. While most of the Bay Area transportation money comes from local sources, the Samhain County Measure A sales tax, bridge tolls, BART, and Caltrain fares and the like, there's a lot happening at the state and federal levels to advance the Bay Area's priorities. Governor Newsom's May revise of the state budget released last Friday really emphasized the state's endorsement of bland Bay Area principles, proposing for the first time to help MTC and the state, other planning agencies, implement their sustainable community strategy. The specific proposal is to direct $500 million in federal American Rescue
This is in Spanish, please click the globe that says interpretation on the menu bar at the bottom of your screen. And you will need to select to mute the original content in order to hear the Spanish translation. Before we get to our presenters tonight, I do want to kick it off to our mayor, Justin Manalo, for some welcoming remarks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy lives to join us for a learning session around your transportation challenges and needs. Your voice truly matters. We want to ensure that transportation options in Daly City serve everyone that lives, works, or visits Daly City. We are also an age-friendly city, a special designation by the World Health Organization because of our commitment to the fastest-growing age demographic in our city, older adults. We want to hear about the transportation needs for older adults tonight as well. You know, when I was growing up in Daly City, my family, you know, didn't, they, they had a car, but then I also had to take the bus going to Jefferson High School for Ben Franklin and then going to visit my friends at Fernando Rivera. So it was really important. Sometimes I also would take the bus with my grandmother in order to go to her medical appointments, or if she needed to go to the grocery store. So I know how important it is as far as having, you know, transit and options for our community. And we want to ensure that this continues in our city. I'm so happy to see so many partners here today to really ensure that we have these transit options and opportunities for our community. It's, it's really the reason why I wanted to hold this transportation town hall tonight. We know that, you know, some folks, this is the only mode of transportation. For some, it's sometimes they utilize the system, but we know how dense Daly City is and how important it is to continue to have these opportunities of transit. So tonight you will hear from the C CAG for a short presentation about their development of the community-based transportation plan. And afterwards, you'll be able to also share your transportation stories. Then you'll hear about the reimagined SAM Trans campaign, which will help fine tune bus routes in Daly City. Again, you'll have the opportunity to share your experiences and insights onto alternate routes presented by the SAM Trans team. But before we start our presentations, I want to acknowledge some of my colleagues that are here. Vice Mayor Daws Magbual, also council member Pamela Di Giovanni for being here tonight. And she also sits on C CAG as a board of director. And next, I want to introduce our very special guest who took the time out of his busy schedule and who never forgets Daly City. Our county supervisor for opening remarks and really his continued support and effort to ensuring that we have our transit needs here. From the onset on when he was on council to his role as a board president at the county. So we are so grateful to have him here. Supervisor David Canepa, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Manalo, for this invitation. And I truly, I truly appreciate how collaborative you are. I want to thank the, the council and the staff. I want to talk a little bit about Plan Bay Area 2050 and some of the initiatives through my role as the Metropolitan Transportation Commissioner. As you know, it's myself and serving the cities is Gina Pappin. So one of MTC's core responsibilities is the development of the Bay Area's long-range regional transportation plan and sustainable communities strategy. State and federal law requires this plan to be updated every four years. And what do you know, it's just about that time again. Nearly four have now passed since MTC and A BAG adopted the current regional plan, which is known as Plan Bay Area 2040 back in 2017. So next week, MTC and A BAG will release a draft of the next plan called Plan Bay Area 2050, which charts a course for transportation investment as well as housing and land use out to 2050. MTC is scheduled to adopt the final version of Plan Bay Area 2050 this fall. On the transportation front, the biggest piece of the draft plan is to restore, operate, and maintain the transportation network we already have. This reflects a longstanding MTC commitment to fix it first. Some of the other transportation priorities include expanding and modernizing the regional rail network by extending a newly electrified Caltrain and high-speed rail to the Salesforce Transit Center in downtown San Francisco, building a second rail crossing between San Francisco and Oakland, and completing BART through downtown San Jose to Santa Clara, providing more money for community land improvements in lower-income and historically marginalized neighborhoods, promoting a more seamless transit experience by eliminating barriers to multi-agency trips, requiring schedule coordination among agencies, and reforming fare policies, improving freeway interchanges and relieving critical bottlenecks, completing an integrated completing an integrated network of express lanes, including the lanes now under construction on 101 between SFO and Palo Alto, improving safety for all pedestrians and bikers as well as drivers. While most of the Bay Area transportation money comes from local sources, the San Mateo County Measure A sales tax, bridge tolls, BART, and Caltrain fares and the like, there's a lot happening at the state and federal levels to advance the Bay Area's priorities. Governor Newsom's May revise of the state budget released last Friday really emphasized the state's endorsement of bland Bay Area principles, proposing for the first time to help MTC and the state, other planning agencies, implement their sustainable community strategy. The specific proposal is to direct $500 million in Federal American Rescue Plan Act money to grant that would be administered by the state Housing and Community Development Department to help California metro areas reach their climate goals the state has established by spurring infill development to reduce vehicle miles traveled, also known as VMT. The May revise also proposes spending over four billion dollars for transportation infrastructure and zero emission vehicle programs, an extra $1 billion for transit improvements, 1.4 billion for zero emission buses and trucks, 150 million for new charging stations, clean school buses and the like, $500 million for railroad grade separation, $500 million for the new bicycle and pedestrian projects. The May revise also forecasts an increase of $125 million in state transit assistance above the original January estimate due to higher diesel fuel prices. This would deliver about $43 million more to support operations at SAM Trans, Caltrain, BART, Muni, and other agencies. In Washington, the federal government has really stepped up its support for public transit agencies that have been hammered by COVID. Thanks to the advocacy of agencies like MTC to say nothing of the incredible leadership from Speaker Pelosi and the rest of the Bay Area Congressional delegation. Bay Area Transit Agencies managed to weather the storm and are well-positioned to help lead our way back to the new normal. Here in the San Mateo County, the loss of ridership during the pandemic has cut SAM Trans revenue by about $30 million to $35 million so far. Yet, the first two rounds of federal COVID assistance provided by SAM Trans, about $62 million in emergency funding. Caltrain has lost about $108 million since the start of the pandemic, while the first two rounds of assistance delivered about $111 million. And both Caltrain and SAM Trans are poised to receive tens of millions of additional dollars once MTC begins allocating the third round of federal money from the American Rescue Plan. Looking ahead, it's encouraging that President Biden's American Jobs Plan would get to the scale of infrastructure investment, will need to improve mobility and safety, and also to make meaningful progress on climate change and social justice. MTC will be working closely with the Bay Area Congressional delegation to support a funding plan that brings the Bay Area its fair share. President Biden's theme of building back better is one that is also guiding another important MTC initiative, the Blue Ribbon Transit Recovery Task Force, that was formed last May when the scale of the ridership and revenue losses faced by Bay Area Transit Agencies became apparent. The 32-member task force includes my MTC colleague Gina Pappin from the City of Millbrae, plus several other elected officials, representatives from the state senate and assembly, the California State Transportation Agency, advocates for people with disabilities, transit agencies, business and labor groups, and transit and social justice advocates. The task force is expected to make specific recommendations this July for improving Bay Area Transit Service to make it better coordinated, easier to understand, and navigate, and generally more customer-friendly. Amongst the things the task force may endorse, at the very least, is a unified regional transit map and standardized signage so passengers can easily move with their way around any station and get to connecting services faster. But the task force, as well as an MTC-led fare integration task force, is expected to help MTC implement some of the other planned Bay Area 2050 priorities. I mentioned earlier, creating a more seamless experience for riders who use more than one transit system, say SAM Trans plus BART or Caltrain plus Muni, simplifying and streamlining fare payment and trip planning, coordinating schedules, setting up more time transferred hubs. As we all try to come back stronger from the COVID-19 pandemic, the work of the Blue Ribbon Task Force is consistent with MTC's and Plan Bay Area's 2050 vision of a region that is better connected, more affordable, diverse, healthy, and economically vibrant. And so to the mayor and city council, thank you so much. I was on the city council. I live in this community. And I'm glad that such a forum is taking place. And so thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Supervisor David Canepa, and thank you for all your work continuously. We are so proud that you are at the helm.
Okay, we are ready for our first presentation and we are going to kick it off to Greg Goodfellow with the City-County Association of Governments. Greg, it's all yours.
Stephen, is my, do I have a screen share?
Yes, please share your screen.
Are we seeing my presentation slide?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you so much. Well, hello, everybody. Thank you to the mayor, the supervisor, and the council. I am here to introduce and collect feedback on the Daly City Community-Based Transportation Plan update. As you can see by my opening slide, this is a plan managed by the City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County. I am a consultant working on the plan from Placeworks. And of course, the city of Daly City is our gracious host this evening. So I'm going to walk you through a few steps tonight. First, I'll talk about what a community-based transportation plan is, go through a few fundamentals. I'm going to introduce you to the last update of the 2008 Bay Shore CBTP. I'll go through the current CBTP, the study area and some of the conditions, as well as some of the demographic and transit conditions. And then finally, and this is the major portion of my presentation, I'm going to collect feedback about your experience of transportation in the area and some of the transportation gaps and solutions that you may have to bring into this plan and create recommendations for improvements in the area. And I'll wrap up my presentation with ways you can stay involved in this process and continue on in the feedback and recommendations. All right, let's start with what a community-based transportation plan is. A community-based transportation plan is a, a plan to improve mobility for what are called communities of concern. Now, this is a little bit of a term of art. Communities of concern are census tracts that have a combination of challenging census characteristics. The main one being they have a high threshold of low-income households. Other characteristics from the census that characterize some of these communities are high levels of non-English speaking households, high populations of the elderly, households with zero or fewer cars than most, single-parent households. Others include disabled populations, and there are a couple others, but the main characteristic is that they are low-income and that they also have a combination of some of these other challenging characteristics. And the main approach to community-based transportation plans is first and foremost diverse and direct outreach to the members of these communities, finding out directly from them what are the transportation challenges they face and what are their ideas for fixing these challenges. And what we're trying to do are improve transportation choices for these communities and fill in what are usually called, quote, "gaps" in the system. Could be anything from a workable bike lane that suddenly stops at a dangerous intersection and then starts up again two blocks later and therefore is difficult to use. Or it could be a gap in a bus route, or a tiny gap. In other words, a bus route stops too early and therefore is unusable for someone who needs to use it later in the evening. A big part of, of any true community-based transportation plan is also working with community partners to reach the residents of these areas. So of course, we're working with city staff here in Daly City. We've got staff of SAM Trans on our advisory board. We're working closely with the Peninsula Family Service, the Youth Leadership Institute. I've been in touch with the Bay Shore and Jefferson School Districts who are helping distribute some of our materials. Senior Centers in Daly City, the Bahanihan Resource Center, Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. Other CBOs and nonprofits are key to finding the best ways to reach their constituents in these communities and find out the best way to get their feedback. Again, community-based transportation plans are based entirely on the feedback of these, of communities and the needs and solutions that they have. All right, I want to introduce you to the 2008 Bay Shore CBTP because this was the last CBTP update for this area. What you'll see on this slide is the study area for this plan. And as you can see, it was restricted only to the area around the Cow Palace. And the reasons this is important is, and you'll see this in my following slides, it's very different from the 2021 CBTP. So what were the recommendations that came out of that 2008 plan? And again, these are the recommendations that came from speaking to people in the area. Well, they wanted to improve public awareness of transit. A lot of people said they didn't know about certain transit resources. They, they wanted to improve transit stops, subsidize transit passes and shuttle service to Kaiser. That was a big one that came out of that. We heard a lot about enhancing pedestrian safety and improving bike lanes. Now, if you look at these recommendations in the last 13 years, about 57% of them were implemented either in full or in part, which can be considered a good success rate. These are, a lot of these recommendations are long-term and difficult to implement. But again, I want to show you this to compare to what you'll see next for the current CBTP. Okay, here we are now. As you can see in the map here, the CBTP area includes four separate of what are called these communities of concern. Those are the areas of purple hash on this map. You can see Bay Shore is still there, but now there are three other communities on the other side of Daly City. And what I want to reiterate again is that these are not communities selected for a certain reason by a certain group. These are again just coming out of census characteristics and census data. And so these are the communities where that low income and those challenging data characteristics show up. These are four unique communities, about 26,000 residents live in them, about 8,000 households composed of about 6,000 families. And what's interesting about these is we found that there's four common household challenges to each. They all have a high threshold of low-income households. They all have a high threshold of minority households. They all have a high threshold of zero-vehicle households, which of course impacts your transit pattern. And they all have a high threshold of rent burdened households. If you're not familiar with that phrase, a rent burden means you're spending over 30% of your family income on rent. Some differences from county-wide population within these communities of concern. Excuse me, there is an 18% limited English proficiency versus 9% county-wide. So double the rate of families with limited English proficiency. 56% of these families drive to work versus 69% county-wide. So fewer commuters are driving alone than, than total county-wide. And even more indicative of transit use, 23% take public transit to work versus 10% county-wide, over double the population. And what this map here is, excuse me, is the percent population with an income below the 200% poverty level. So these are households living in poverty. And as you see in Bay Shore, about 25 to 30% of households are. And in the communities on the west side, about 31 to 45% of households are. So now that we've gone over the conditions and the study area, I want to talk about some of what we've heard already from some of the CBOs we're working with. And then, of course, I want to hear from you what your experience in Daly City in and around these communities of concern are. And again, your feedback is what will shape the recommendations that will go into this plan and ultimately open up these recommendations for grant funding and actual implementation. Let's talk about public transit. What you've, the map you're seeing here is a general public transit resource map for the area. I want to point out very importantly that the SAM Trans Daly City Bay Shore Shuttle is not shown. And that should be mentioned because that is an important resource. But what we've heard from our survey of CBOs so far on a more general level is that it's too dark around certain bus stops. We've heard that drivers don't always see people at bus stops because of this, and that can be frustrating. What we've heard, and this is absolutely repeats what was, what we heard in 2008, is that Bay Shore remains isolated. It's still difficult to access BART and Caltrain. I heard that from both CBOs and from the school district, the Bay Shore Elementary School District. And I also heard that information about special subways can be hard to find. And that some residents don't hear about it until after they've found a different way around a certain access point and they wish they had had more information. Active transportation, this includes walking and cycling. We've heard already that the area needs safer, bigger, and more connected bike lanes. We've heard from people that went walking with loved ones in wheelchairs or with walkers that sidewalks are difficult and they don't know where to report that. They want to see these things fixed and they don't know where to report these dangerous sidewalks. We've heard that a lot of the busier crosswalks in these areas aren't visible enough. Visibility is low. People feel dangerous at these crosswalks and that impedes pedestrian routes. In this slide, I'm calling safety, support, and access. And this is really having to do with children, the elderly, and disabled residents. In some of our surveys, we've heard that pair transit options are too expensive and they require a lot of advanced planning. This is a common concern in all areas with pair transit. Bus drivers can be uninformed about older riders' options. We've heard that sometimes questions go unanswered by riders who are looking for the next step in their route or a different option for a certain route. Again, we heard that dangerous intersections and crossroads around schools can impede access to schools. Parents are worried about their children. And a quote that I thought was very telling was that a gentleman told me that his one-hour appointment at the VA hospital ended up taking six hours because the route there and back took so long. And I think that's indicative of from what I've heard from senior centers and a lot of the elderly in these early surveys we've done. All right, this is the part of the meeting where I'd like to hear from you. What I want to stress again is that it is your feedback that goes into the recommendations of the community-based transportation plan. That is a regulation of from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission who funds these plans is that they have to be based on feedback. And ultimately, these recommendations will get prioritized in the report based on their implementability. You know, how well can they really be done? How much will they cost? How much, how well do they match some of the priorities in the city's existing plans, those kind of things? But anyways, to prompt you and any feedback you might have or some of the questions, some of the feedback I'd like to hear. Are there places in these areas or from these areas that are hard to get to? Why is that? What makes them hard to get to? Are there routes within or without these areas that feel unsafe for your family? Are there improvements that would meet any special mobility needs that you have, pair transit, et cetera? What new transportation options would improve your daily life, your actual movement throughout the day? Can you think of anything that would just make it so much easier for you to get around in these areas or surrounding these areas? And then finally, I'm curious about your COVID patterns. How long do you think your new COVID travel patterns will last? Are these things that we should consider in a community-based transportation plan for Daly City? I'm going to open up the floor now and hope that anyone listening has anything to add.
We have one hand raised, LeAnn Young.
Hi, hello. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi. So hi, I'm a Daly City resident who's been living in Southern Hills for a number of years. And then needed to have my children who were in high school utilize transportation. But that it would take about two hours for my kids to get to and from school, being that their school choice was Terra Nova in Pacifica and having to transport from Southern Hills up to the top of the hill, Daly City. So I think when they were in elementary school, it was right, the school was right in the neighborhood. And then middle school, there was an actual bus that went around our neighborhood and went down into Brisbane because we're part of the Brisbane School District. So elementary school district it was. But what I find is our area is quite isolated. And I had asked before about possibility of a on-demand type of shuttle or a shuttle like Bay Shore area has for a shuttle to be able to go to the major shopping centers like Westlake, Stone Town, Cerro Monte, and the medical offices. But there's never really been an opportunity to have that happen, to help get people out of their cars and, you know, to be able to go to the shopping centers and doctor's offices through shuttle service.
LeAnn.
And so I thought I'd give that feedback that our area just seems to be kind of like out of reach.
LeAnn, do you feel like you're speaking on behalf of other residents as well? Do you hear this from others?
I, I think so too, because in Southern Hills, our area, you know, we keep having people that age. They're aging and then so they can't drive anymore or they don't drive anymore. Or they might prefer not to drive anymore, that sort of thing. There's a lot of the people who've been on our homeowners board, you know, are older. So anyway, I just thought if somehow we could have, whether it's a town hall or some sort of conversation to at least allow our, our neighbors to come and communicate or talk with Samtrans staff. That's a start.
Absolutely. And LeAnn, just so you know, as we've done other of these plans in other areas of the Bay Area, that's a common suggestion we get is some sort of dedicated route or shuttle route between some important destinations for the elderly in a certain area, whether it's shopping centers, medical resources. And rather than obviously traditional bus routes. And so that is a good idea, and that's certainly one that will, will, will go into the recommendations and our review.
Yeah, and thank you for listening. I'm always available to be a connection so we can try to get more people involved and to be able to utilize the transportation. I know there's a lot of people that drive into our area to actually hike at the San Bruno Mountain. I find that really interesting. People drive into Crocker, Crocker Avenue, I believe, up there. Close to where Southfield crosses Crocker. And so, you know, also it's interesting how, I'm wondering if, if there was a bus line that goes there. People might bust in instead of driving in.
Absolutely. Well, LeAnn, I'm also, just so you know, if you stay around till the end of this, my, the last couple of slides in my presentation have information about our survey and some upcoming opportunities to participate. So if you are interested, please, please stick around and I'll share that information. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Does anybody else have any feedback or experience about particularly those four areas on the map that's shown right now?
If you would like to share your feedback, please use the raised hand feature. And then we will call your name.
We have no further hands raised.
Okay. Well, then I will certainly finish up my presentation. So people have these resources for further involvement. Over the next couple of months, and of course, this is dependent on COVID and social distancing regulations and patterns. We are going to hold pop-up events where we can speak face-to-face and answer some of these questions with residents in ethnic markets, senior centers, at school meetings and in shopping centers directly in these communities of concern. So be on the lookout for those. We have graphic flyers that we'll put together digitally with our hosts and our partners to notice those meetings. Where we're going to continue to work with our community-based organizations to host meetings. And if you're interested, we have extensive background reports on these communities. Interesting transit and demographic information on the CCAD website. You see the link there. And we have a survey that is both online and hard copy, which we'd love it if you were to take. There's links to the English and Spanish versions of the survey there. It's a two-page survey. It has questions about travel patterns and challenges and solutions, as I was talking about earlier, as well as experiences with COVID. And hard copies are of course available. I can get those to you with, with self, excuse me, self-addressed stamp envelopes or some other means of returning them. And you have my contact information there. Please get in touch with me any way you would like, or for any reason you'd like, answer questions. Or if you have information or ideas about reaching these communities, or if you'd like survey hard copies, please send me an email. I appreciate your time. Of course, I appreciate the, the mayor and the council's time as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Greg. And we'll be sure to place that information on the survey on our social media and website if you send it over to us.
I certainly will.
Okay. Well, it looks like we are ready for Samtrans. So if a member of the Samtrans team would like to take over on the presentation.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Linnahan. I am a public affairs specialist with Samtrans. I'm joined tonight by my colleague Jonathan. First of all, just wanted to thank you all for including us in your agenda tonight. We are here to provide you an update on Reimagine Samtrans. That is our project to evaluate and basically reimagine our bus network in San Mateo County. And we are in phase two of Reimagine Samtrans. So the focus of tonight's presentation is to give you an overview of the three bus network alternatives that we've come up with as a part of this phase of Reimagine Samtrans. Get your feedback on those alternatives. Go over some potential changes that those alternatives will have for the city of Daly City. And then we're also going to talk about some ways the public can provide their input to us regarding these alternatives. The most important part of this phase of Reimagine Samtrans is the public input aspect. This, the feedback that we receive right now will, will determine the preferred network alternative that we come up with and will be out for public input later this fall. So it's really important that the public participate in this phase of the project. We do have several ways that the public can provide their feedback. Jonathan will go over those. One of the things that I want to stress, and I think Jonathan will stress too, is that nothing you see tonight is final. These are proposals, these are alternatives. We don't, we don't have any preconceived notions, nothing has been determined. We're here to get your feedback about what you think about these alternatives and what you think works in Daly City and what doesn't. And that will help us make the best network we can moving forward. So with that, I'm going to kick it off to Jonathan. He's going to go through a brief presentation and then we're happy to take your feedback or questions at the end. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. And thank you, everyone, for being here and letting us present. This is one of my most exciting presentations during the reimagine process because it's to my city. So I am a resident of Daly City and look forward to presenting to you all. And so without further ado, let's hop into reimagine. Excuse me, there we go. So before we hop into the alternatives, I wanted to talk a little bit about our guiding principles as we went into looking at the alternatives. So first is customer focus. We fully realize that as a transit agency, we wouldn't be here but for the customers. So we want to make sure that we have a system that works for our customers and our riders. At the same time, we also want to make sure that we design a service that is able to be delivered with a high caliber from our workforce. So we definitely have our operators in mind as we are designing the system. And speaking of that system, we want to make sure that it's an effective mobility provider within the county, that it's not just a bus out on the road for the sake of a bus being on the road, but rather that it helps people connect and be utilized for their daily trips. Finally, social equity, we want to make sure that everything that we do continues to advance equity within the county and that we provide services where they're really needed. Talking about the timeline, just briefly, as Amy talked about, this project did start in the summer of 2019. And now we are in public outreach about the alternatives. From here, we'll design a preferred alternative, which means, as Amy said, nothing is set in stone. And that we'll take everybody's feedback and that will then be designed into this preferred alternative that will go out for another round of public comment. Then go to the Samtrans Board for adoption and implementation scheduled for the summer of 2022. Talking just briefly about what informed our alternatives, so existing conditions, how the system is today. The public outreach that we performed during phase one, asking people what works and what doesn't work in the system, what they would like to see and what's important to them. And we also did a lot of market research to make sure that we understood travel patterns of folks, where population would be increasing and decreasing in the county and where work would be, more jobs would be created. And all those go into the alternatives, which I'll present tonight. Overall, the alternatives, though, we did have six objectives that we wanted to make sure we met in each of the alternatives. So first is scheduling. We want to make sure that we're efficient as possible with our scheduling, that we create routes that we can meld together to reduce costs and maximize our resources. Reliability, we want to make sure that once designed, if we say a bus is going to be somewhere at a certain time, it's going to be there at that time. Equity, making sure that we improve service in the highest need areas within the county. Connections, making sure that we improve connections to other transit agencies that serve the county parts, Caltrain, Muni, VTA, and also ourselves and making sure that we connect well. Efficiency, this is all about making sure that our routes are being maximized to the fullest that the buses are as full as possible. And if we can combine routes somewhere to meet that need and take one bus and then put it into resources elsewhere, that's great. And duplication, we want to make sure that we're not serving the same area with two different routes to compete with ourselves is just not that useful. So you'll see in the alternative, some reduction to duplication. So now we have a short video that was put together about the alternatives that I'll share with you. And then we'll go into a little bit more depth.
Reimagine Samtrans is an exciting project to evaluate and refresh the entire Samtrans bus system. Early in the project, we held more than sixty community events and received nearly five thousand survey responses from our riders, the public and our bus operators. You told us how Samtrans could better meet your transportation needs. When we asked, how should we invest in better bus service? You told us your top priorities were more frequent service, better real-time bus arrival information, faster routes with fewer stops and better connections to rail service like Bart and Caltrain. Designing bus routes is all about trade-offs and we can't do it all. We asked you how we should balance these trade-offs. Samtrans riders said they want the bus to come more often on major streets, while others want bus service to more places. Riders want service outside of traditional commute times. And riders and non-writers both said they would be willing to walk a little farther to a bus stop if the bus was faster and more direct. So what did we do next? We used everything we learned to design three bus network alternatives. Each of the three alternatives sets a different vision for the future. Alternative one focuses on creating a high-frequency bus network that can be used for all kinds of trips. In this alternative, seven routes in high-demand areas would provide service every fifteen minutes or better all day long. This network would bring four times as many people within walking distance of a high-frequency bus route compared to today. Alternative two improves connections to rail stations and expands access to the Bay Area region. It adds new direct routes to key Bart and Caltrain stations, employment centers and community colleges. Three routes, including two express routes, would serve downtown San Francisco. Alternative three offers the most geographic coverage of service. In addition to keeping service around the county, this alternative expands midday and weekend service. It also includes four new on-demand service areas. On-demand service allows people to take trips within the coverage area using an app or calling to book trips in real time. We want to know which network best describes your priorities. Please visit reimaginesamtrans.com or call one eight hundred six six zero four two eight seven to learn how each route may change and to give us your input.
Awesome. So going into the alternatives and kind of the trade-offs, when we talked about the alternative, so alternative one really responded to those that asked for a higher frequency within the county. And we have some trade-offs that we have to do in order to accomplish an alternative that has that. So alternative one, we would have a modest reduction in school-related services. Pretty much neutral on local service, a really big increase in frequent service. Our moderate is what people are calling it, but I think it's pretty large. And then express service would pretty much remain the same. Under alternative two, which this is the connections that really, really focuses on connections to regional rail like Caltrain and Bart. School-related service would have a decent reduction. A local service would increase. Our frequent service would stay neutral, so we wouldn't really have more frequency in the system. And our express service would increase. And we'll get into some of those particulars in just a few. And then alternative three, which is the retaining geographic service coverage. So have the buses serve as much geographical area as possible. We would have a slight reduction in school service. Our local service would have a decent increase. Frequent service would stay neutral and our express service would have a reduction. So in looking at how all these alternatives compare, first you'll see that nothing has all the answers in it. And so this is a good place to, to reiterate that these aren't the final outcomes. These are examples of if we were to have more frequent service or really strong connections to regional transit or a lot of geographic coverage, what we would do to the routes in order to accomplish those goals. But based on people's feedback and really honing down into individual routes and understanding the needs, the preferred alternative will change with that feedback. So it's really important to take the survey. I'll say that again during the presentation, but that survey is really our guide to understanding how to accomplish the, the wants that we all want for the county through the changes in the routes. So the first route that I want to chat about is the ECR. The ECR is our longest route and definitely carries the majority of our riders. And there are three different alternatives for the ECR. The first alternative, which would be under the frequency model, would split the route. And it would split at the Millbury Transit Center with ECR North and ECR South. And the ECR North would operate every ten minutes. So for us here in Daly City, we would see operation every ten minutes. And then it would operate every fifteen minutes on the weekends. On the southern side, so south of Millray, we would see riders, or excuse me, frequency every fifteen minutes, seven days a week. And the difference and the reason for the frequency difference between north and south is that north of Millbury actually has a lot more riders than the southern portion. And so we wanted to put the frequency there under this proposal. We would shorten the route here in Daly City, just on the northern end by Daly City Bart. We'd use Flirney Street and that just improves the travel times along the ECR while maintaining connections to Muni and Daly City Bart. And we'd reintroduce the ECR Rapid. And we'd reintroduce the ECR Rapid. That is, if you're familiar with it, existed about two years ago now. It is a limited stop, so a lot fewer stops, so it travels quicker. And that'd be between Redwood City and San Bruno Bart. So if you were traveling. To Redwood City, for example, from Daly City, you could take the ECR North and then transfer. At San Bruno Bart to the Rapid and have a much quicker trip down to Redwood City without having to do that. Transfer to the local ECR South in Millbury. In alternative two, this would keep the route as a whole, so it'd still be the ECR as we know it today. But we would be looking at reducing the number of stops, so we consolidate stops along the route, about thirty percent of them. And as a result. Some riders, about ten percent, would have to walk a little bit further in order to get to a new bus stop. But it would speed up travel time along the ECR by ten to fifteen minutes during peak times. And again, we would shorten the route up here in Daly City by using Flirney Street. And the final alternative, the geographic coverage, the route would stay the same as it is today. The hours of service and frequency would say the same. We would still do the shortening of the route here in Daly City. But with the stops, we would reschedule the route to better reflect traffic. So this is something that we do all the time trying to review it. But this would be a larger overhaul with a lot more change than we would have during a traditional service. Change, so it would really try to set it up, kind of re-base line it to the traffic that there is today. So going into proposals for Daly City. We have the Route one ten and under alternative one, we were looking to improve travel times along the route. And so the deviation to Skyline Drive to serve Longview Drive would be eliminated, low ridership there. Effective riders along Longview Drive would need to walk about five more minutes to get stops on Skyline Drive. The route would operate every thirty minutes off. Off-peak and on the weekends compared to every sixty minutes currently. And the, you'll see this throughout the slides, but any route that had school-related services part of their trips. We would break out that school-related service into its own route number, so it'd be Route ten. Under alternative two, we would maintain the same as alignment, meaning the route would be the same as in alternative one. But the frequency wouldn't increase, it would stay the same as it is today. And then in alternative three. We would keep the same alignment as today and the route would operate every thirty minutes off-peak and on the weekends compared to every sixty minutes currently. Then the Route one twelve, so under the high-frequency alternative one, the route would terminate at Saramonte on the north end and Sharp Park on the southern end. And we would still have existing services available for individuals in those areas that it was discontinued. But the frequency, this would allow the frequency on the Route one twelve to increase every thirty minutes. And again, we'd break out the school-related trips. Then, under alternative two, which is the high connection. We would terminate the route at Sharp Park on the southern end. And it would not continue to Lindemar parking ride, however, we have other routes that would. And this would be concurrent with the proposal under alternative two, to increase the frequency on Route one eighteen. That provides service between Lindemar Park and Ride and Bart. And then alternative three, this would actually discontinue the route. The rationale being low ridership and that the Run ten, one twenty-one and one thirty can absorb most of the passengers. And, but we recognize that more passengers may have to transfer into this scenario to reach their destinations. Going on to the Route one eighteen, under alternative one, this is the high frequency. The route would end at Coma Bart and no longer serve Daly City Bart to reduce some duplicity that we have there with other transit, including the ECR and Bart. And also the added benefit there is that it would improve the reliability of the route. Because a lot of our on-time performance issues and delays happen between the two Bart stations. And our alternative two, we would have the route end again at Coma Bart. And the frequency would be improved to every thirty minutes during peak service. And under alternative three, no changes would be made to this route. Think that's a bad slide in there, I'll double check, sorry. The Route one twenty alternative, so alternative one, the high frequency. We would shorten the route again at Daly City Bart to reduce the duplicative service. And you'll see that with a lot of our proposals is that if the route serves two different Bart stations. That we change it to only serve one. As long as there's a connection still between the two, so people in between will have a connection. But a lot of our routes were duplicative between the two multiple Bart stations. And the frequency would increase on the one twenty to every fifteen minutes all day and weekends. And then during the afternoon peak between two and four P M, we'd increased every ten minutes. And the evening service levels for this route would double, more than double for seven days a week. Under. Alternative two, we would extend the route to Mission Hills Park. Frequency wouldn't change and this would be concurrent with the recommendation to shorten the one twenty-one to end at Daly City Bart. I'll, under alternative three, we would shorten the route again to end at Daly City Bart. Here we would see service to the South Hill area. Other Samtrans routes would still serve the areas where the router shortened. And the route would not connect Coma Bart and Saramonte, but other routes would. And finally, the Route one twenty and one thirty would be combined at Saramonte. And this allows for connections to South San Francisco Oyster Point and SFO to occur on that combination. The Route one twenty-two, this would, under alternative one, the high frequency, it would streamline the route. No longer servicing Coma Bart. And because the route changed trips between Daly City Bart and Seaton Medical Center and Skyline College are shorter. The reroute. And we would reroute the bus to serve Callan Boulevard with the Route one twenty-two or he's serving Geller. This is to provide a little bit more coverage. And we would discontinue the peak hour extension to South Hill Boulevard and Altivista Way. And that's due to low ridership on the route. Under alternative two, which is the improved connections. We would shorten the route to end at Daly City Bart, it would no longer serve Coma Bart. But again, there are other routes that would serve the same area. And we would introduce a new route, the Route one twenty-four Skyline Limited. And that would replace the one twenty-one south of Saramonte. And it would serve the area additionally, additionally Route one forty and one twenty-two would be in the same area. Some riders along Callan Boulevard and Hickey Boulevard, as well as Everness, would have to walk a little bit further to get to the bus stop. But the Route one twenty-four frequency would be thirty minutes, it'd be faster service to Skyline College and Daly City Bart for the area. And alternative three, the geographic coverage, we would streamline the route. Discontinuing peak hour extensions to South Hill Boulevard and Altivista Way due to low ridership. San Giornano Way, deviation would be discontinued. And the Route one twenty-two, however, would still serve the area to Seaton Medical. And as part of this, then we could extend the weekend service to be increased by thirty minutes all day. All right, Route one twenty-two, the high. Frequency alternative, we would split the route. And the northern portion of the route would remain the one twenty-two. Sorry, north of Coma Bart is where we had split it. And that area would increase in frequency to every fifteen minutes during the day and on weekends. And the southern portion would become a new route, Route one twenty-five, and that would operate every thirty minutes. All day, and this will help improve on-time performance. And it adds the frequency similar to the ECR in alternative one, where a majority of the ridership is located. Under our alternative two, there'd be no changes to the one twenty-two. And in their alternative three, there'd be no changes to the one twenty-two. Moving on to the Route one thirty, under the high-frequency alternative, we would extend the route to Oyster Point. This would have service between East Market Street and Daly City Bart would also increase in frequency. And overall, there would be more frequency to the route. It would increase the frequency to every fifteen minutes during the day, seven days a week. And it would also have the service operate later, it would operate till midnight on weekends instead of eight P M. Under alternative two. We would have the extension to Oyster Point on weekdays, providing more direct access to South San Francisco Caltrain Station. The route would end there at the South San Francisco Caltrain Station. And again, under this alternative, it'd operate till midnight instead of eight P M on weekends. And their alternative three, it would operate only between Daly City Bart and Saramonte. And it would extend to Oyster Point, again, under this alternative. And slight difference, it would operate until ten P M on weekends instead of eight P M. And then talking about community routes, we do have one, which is the Route sixteen and forty-nine. Which are routes to serve Terra Nova High School, they start in Brisbane and come down. The proposal is to combine them and the rationale is that they're both underutilized routes, they're about half-capacity. And so by combining them, we're going to add three minutes of travel time to the routes. But also be able to save one bus during that time to be able to allocate the resources elsewhere in the system. So thank you for listening to the alternatives, hopefully I captured the routes that you're interested in, although I can take questions at the end about other routes as well. But talking about the public input process, again, this is super important. We have a website, www.reimagine samtrans.com. There you'll have all the route alternatives, including the ones I went over today. We also have the, a couple of events virtually with staff, we have a live social. Q and A session, we have been doing a program on Instagram Live called Sam Chats. And that's every Friday at noon and we go over different topics and right now it's all about reimagine. We just had one that's unrecorded on there about the ECR with some feedback. So that's a really great resource that those are recorded, so you can go check, take a look at them on our Instagram account. We have meetings with stakeholder groups, including this meeting. And we do have some limited in-person pop-up events and that calendar is on our website. We also have the North County Meeting and that's tomorrow. So we had virtual public meetings and we split them up by areas of the county. North County will be the last one that we have, it'll be from five thirty to six thirty tomorrow. And we do have that available in different languages. We'll be having it in English, Spanish, Mandarin, and Cantonese. And I'll be presenting there too, so you can come hang out with me again. And again, all the media information is at reimagine samtrans.com slash get involved. And again, just talking about that survey, it's a really easy survey to take. It does not ask you questions about every single route, it's really geared towards which routes do you want to talk about and which comments would you like to give? Which alternatives do you like for those routes? So it's really geared to not take a long time, but get your voice heard through the process. And with that, thank you so much for your time and I am here for any questions.
Anyone with questions can use the raise hand feature, I see we have one hand raised, Clayton Koo.
Hi, Mr. Stickey, thank you so much for the presentation, I really appreciate it. I, I have gone to the website and I just had a general question regards to alternative one, two, and three. I know that for each of the different routes, there are different maps and sort of different. Like terminus points for each of the routes, so. When it comes to making a decision that's San Trans regarding which alternatives to move forward with, will they take into account like alternative one, two, and three? For each different route or is it more of a general regional approach where? Alternative one would be the approach you would take for this region, alternative two, alternative three, or would it be like a case-by-case scenario situation?
So more of the latter, and that's a great question, so. Based on the comments that we get back, so the survey is really geared toward individual route comments. And that's what we appreciate, I mean, it could go as in-depth as some of the routes that I talked about that are terminating at Coma Bart or Daly City Bart. If folks say, hey, like, you really have that backwards, we really use Daly City Bart more than Coma Bart. Then that can change that alternative, so. The, in the end, we do have to balance, so each of the alternatives balance out to a slight increase in service. We're estimating a ten percent increase in our workforce when reimagine it is completely implemented. So, you know, if we change one thing or give service to a certain area, then we may have to reduce. In another, like with the alternatives, we'll have to match them up correctly, but we can't have everything that we want. But yeah, it'll be down to the route level and even details on the route, so be as specific as you can be, appreciate it.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then I was just also wondering in terms of some of these like new routes. So when I was a student, I took the sixteen, the one twenty-one, one twenty, one twelve, and one ten the past. And I know those breaks in terms of sort of trying to increase reliability in terms of connection points between sixteen and one twenty-one. Into ceremony and other Bart stations. I guess I was wondering, sure, like in terms of your perspective, in terms of sort of trying to improve the reliability, I know at times I've. Hopefully tried to like get off at a certain stop and have a bus connect or not wait too long. Has there been consideration in terms of trying to make sure that even with sort of some of those kind of reliability? Hopes in the long term that it doesn't necessarily make people wait even longer sometimes for like connections. Cause I know I've done that, so I'm guessing that a lot of people probably have had similar situations as well.
Yeah, no, that's a great point, I mean, looking at connections is always important to us, so no matter what, you know, is proposed, we want to. They definitely highlight those connections and make sure that they work. But yeah, it definitely helps, you know, that reliability, making sure that we account for things that happen along the route. And that's one of the reasons too why we're proposing some of the splits in the routes, like the one twenty-two split. And the ECR split, the two ninety-two, also we have a split proposed is that if it's a shorter route, then there is. Less chance that something further down the line will affect the on-time, like we have an opportunity to catch up. And to be on time again for those one-offs. But yeah, we're definitely looking at, under all of them, making sure our on-time performance is up to par. And looking at those connections and that's really region-wide to making sure that we interact well with Caltrain, Bart. VTA on those connections, because they totally hear you having to wait for a long time for a connection, just. It just doesn't work, so.
Yeah, I will, I will say like, it's nice to hear that you guys are trying to like prioritize reliability, having been one of those people standing out at the bus stops. For ten, fifteen, twenty minutes and just wondering if it's, if it's something further down the route that's sort of delaying it. Or if it's just something regarding like reliability of just like how on time it is, so yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely, and I'll just let you know, as you said that too, and I think it's a really cool project, is we are working on better. Or even more sophisticated communication tools for our buses, like telling you real time where the bus is and if it's delayed. So that takes some of the guesswork out of where's that bus when you are waiting there, so that's kind of outside of reimagine, but it's a separate initiative that the district's doing for sure.
Cool, thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. All right.
Anyone else that would like to speak can use the raise hand feature? We have no other hands raised.
Leilani, I just saw Leanne Young raise her hand.
Thank you. Leanne?
Hi.
Hi, Leanne, how are you?
Knows me very well. Yeah, it's, my kids would take the bus from our neighborhood to wherever. Yeah, it's, my kids would take the bus from our neighborhood to wherever they need to go. And so definitely, I think we'll be looking at those alternative routes more closely because it does affect them being able to ride the bus. So have, has Samtrans, I'll just ask the question, is there ever a possibility to get a neighborhood shuttle like Bay Shore does have?
Yeah, so the shuttle program in like Bay Shore, that's a little bit different than like the Samtrans traditional city bus program. But I will say that there's a study going along with those shuttles as well in us to make sure that we're connecting well. That's again outside of Reimagine, but that's going on as well. So I'll say, nothing's impossible. One of the things that we look at in all of our route planning is true of shuttles as well. It's just that demand and that need. So, you know, please make sure, even if you know, there isn't a specific route that you're interested in, like if you see a need for service or what service you would need, you'll put it on the survey so that we, we know that the folks have that need in an area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Of course. My pleasure.
If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Well, thank you all so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. So thanks for putting it together and giving us the opportunity to present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan and Amy, and we will be sure to help promote the feedback opportunities with Samtrans if you send it over to us. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it.
And just so you know, this was livestreamed online and broadcasted to our cable channel. So people can go to YouTube after today and take a look at the presentation for, for more info on Reimagine Samtrans. So it will be online forever. All righty. Well, thank you all for joining us tonight. I think this ends our meeting. And please consider sharing more feedback online in the surveys. Okay. Bye, everyone.